And now, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, Superintendent.
Thank you. Do you stand? Ready? A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you for your standing, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Now, we're moving on to 4.2, the broadcast statement. Board Member Zhang.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, April 10th at 8:00 PM and Monday, April 11th at noon. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting and submit a speaker form will be sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask if you please defer your comments until your item comes up.
Thank you so much, Board Member Zhang. Now, we're going to move on to item 4.3, Stellar Students. And I will go ahead and do that on behalf of President Pritchett, who could not be here due to work obligations. I want to present the Stellar Students, Yusef Bukvich and Alexandra Morales Barrez, both juniors from Rosemont High School.
Are they on?
Are they on? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and just share a little bit of why they are the Stellar Students. Yusef is a foreign exchange student from Bosnia. He has been exceeding in his classes and doing a great job at becoming involved in extracurricular activities. He is also part of the Pro Youth and Families, two cohorts, Real Talk and Relationships, as well as the Pro Youth Hope. He is also part of the Volleyball Club and Volunteers During Assets, to receive volunteering hours for his program. Our next Stellar Student is Alexandra, who is an exceptional student. Alex has always been great with keeping up with her studies as well as taking on many other activities. She has been part of the dance team for all three years at Rosemont and plans on continuing next year. She is the Vice President of the Asian Student Association and is also part of the Fashion and Lifestyle Club. I'd like to join that one. That just started this year. Alex was also recently appointed as High School Ambassador for Sac City Unified School District. Congratulations to you both. President Pritchett could not be here, but I know she and the board are very proud of both of you. And we'll go ahead and give them an applause, but I don't think I see the students. But Principal Behill, if you want to say a few words?
I'm just so proud of these young people and the Stellar Student. We just so appreciate that the board always recognizes outstanding students from around the district. There are so many and we don't have, you know, we just don't do enough of that. So this is a wonderful opportunity and I thank all of you on behalf of our students and their families and the entire Rosemont family. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Principal Behill. And with that, we're going to move on to item 5.0. Any announcements of action in closed session? Ann?
Good evening, Vice President Garcia. There are four announcements coming out of closed session this evening. The first, the board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2022030207 by a vote of six to zero with President Pritchett absent. Second, the board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of six to zero, President Pritchett absent. Third, the board approved a settlement agreement with Astro Turf Corporation resolving a dispute over warranty defects and repair obligations for turf at Rosemont High School. The vote was six to zero with President Pritchett absent. Under the settlement agreement, Astro Turf will provide all labor and materials for full replacement of the turf field and a new tenure warranty and maintenance package. In exchange, the district will pay Astro Turf a discounted contract price of $499,000 for the project. The fourth and final announcement will be made by the Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I'm very pleased to announce this evening that by a vote of six to zero with Board Member Pritchett absent, the board also approved the appointment of Dr. Karen Bridges as Principal of Pacific Elementary School. Congratulations, Dr. Bridges.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are moving on to item 6.0, Agenda Adoption.
Can you move it?
You looking for a motion?
And I'm looking for a motion.
Second?
Okay. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Everyone, there's consensus on that. Now, moving on to item 7.0, Public Comment. How many comments do we have?
We have seven speakers requesting to speak and our first speaker is Daniel Darby.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, I'm sorry, we have seven? Okay, we'll go ahead and give them two minutes each and it falls within the 15-minute time allotted for public comment. Thank you, Ann. Mr. Darby, you're on mute. Mr. Darby, you're still on mute? Perhaps we can come back to Mr. Darby and move on to the next speaker?
Our next speaker is David Fisher.
Mr. Fisher, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. David Fisher, President of the Sacramento City Teacher Association. We're extremely happy that educators were able to return to classrooms on Monday and have been hard at work providing the high-quality instruction the students and parents have come to expect from our members. We believe that our agreement creates a foundation for a much more constructive process for educators in the district to engage going forward. Immediately, we have notified the district that we have ideas, potential and potential ways to make up for instructional time lost during the strike and very much look forward to the discussion with the district. Secondly, we've invited the district to join us in opposing an independent charter petition that is immediately pending before the Sacramento County Office of Education. If approved, this county-wide charter would undermine the strong CTE programs in Sac City and other surrounding districts, particularly in Twin Rivers. We hope that the district will join us in our effort to prevent independent charters from stripping Sac City students out of our district. This gives us an opportunity to demonstrate that we can work together to achieve tangible results for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins and she also has time seated by Hope Dennis.
So that's four, a total of eight minutes?
Actually, I also have time from Vanessa Kudabak.
Sorry, Ann, I can't see your hand. It's six, so a total of 12 minutes? Six minutes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm thrilled this school was reconvened this week and students across Sacramento were able to get in another week of instruction prior to spring break. This was made possible by the numerous unpaid hours members of SCTA and SEIU's bargaining teams spent in negotiations, as well as the days and nights a group of dedicated parents spent camped in Cerna Center. Missing from that equation are the people who were expected to facilitate a quick resolution. Five out of the seven trustees and Mr. Aguilar. Trustees, you received emails and phone calls from your constituents but chose not to answer. Five of you chose not to get involved at all. Two of you chose to ignore the invitation of State Superintendent Tony Thurmond, who was trying to help end the strike on day three. The entire board decided that day to ignore the needs of the community you were elected to serve and instead you chose to stand with Aguilar as he continued to dig in his heels. At least two of you eventually came to your senses and decided to walk among the people involved to have real conversations. It's troubling that this board is so fixated on the optics of board cohesion that actually doing your job as trustees takes an act of tremendous courage because the rest of the board would perhaps bully anyone who does so. Equally troubling is the fact that many of you are somehow completely unaware of what you've been elected to do. The fact that you're oblivious to the roles and responsibilities of your positions has contributed to the downward spiral of our district. You were not elected to merely write resolutions. You were elected to provide oversight. You were elected to hold the superintendent accountable for his actions. You were elected to create and encourage a learning environment that attracts students and staff alike. You are failing at these things. If you thought you signed up to be the superintendent's friends or to pad your resume, please do the community a favor and resign so someone who truly wants to serve our schools can step in and do the job. Mr. Aguilar, I'm fairly certain you received many applies to the email you sent us yesterday. I chose not to respond because I felt insulted. Regardless of how challenged and exhausted you feel, your decision to force a strike was based on your mythical tale that you've chosen to cling to while those of us on strike were fighting for the future of public education in Sacramento. Please don't lecture us about modeling behaviors for our students. We've been doing that all along. Our students have watched us pick up the slack when there weren't enough adults on campus. They've watched us make the best of bad situations. They've watched us show up for them when they've been deserted by others. And during the strike, they watched us take a stand for our schools. They watched us model exercising our rights as workers, as well as what a democracy looks like in practice rather than theory. We have been the ones who have, in your words, stayed focused on providing our students with the educational experience our students deserve, while you spent time and resources creating the very propaganda that repels employees and students from our district. I hope that all of you have been paying attention to what has been happening. The strike is over, but the movement has just begun. Employees and families alike are tired of watching a group of elected trustees sit by idly as millions of dollars from our budget has been doled out to outside attorneys and consultants. We're tired of programs being cut. We're tired of watching you hand large raises to folks who don't work directly with our students. We're tired of hearing you talk about equity while actually pushing for inequitable practices. We're here to hold you all accountable for your elected duties. We are waiting for you to lead the district to work with labor partners instead of against them because that is ultimately what will help our students. We are here, working as a massive team, to save public education and we are waiting for your response. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Taylor Kayata.
Hey, Mr. Kayata, you have like two minutes?
Thank you. I am really glad to have my two kids back in school. They are glad too. I think my son enjoyed sleeping in, but they're back to learning and we are all glad for that. I'm not going to dwell on what happened during those eight days and what led up to it. I am glad that the district and its labor partners were able to come to agreements that I hope work for everyone. I think I would really just appreciate if the board could take a lesson from this and the Superintendent, that your community, including your teachers, parents, other community members, we want to talk to you, we want to work with you. There's still a lot that we need to work improving in our schools. Please continue to work with us, please listen to us, and let's work together to bring ourselves forward, put our best foot forward and avoid situations like we just lived through. Thank you for all your hard work. I know this can't have been easy for you and it was difficult for everyone, but let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Christine Bieda.
Go ahead. You have two minutes. Christine Bieda? No. Ann, can you repeat the name, please?
Christine Bieda.
Sorry, our chief academic officer? Okay. You're on mute, Christine? Ms. Bieda, you can go ahead and unmute yourself to provide comment. You have two minutes. Perhaps we can come back to her? Can we move on to the next speaker?
That was our final speaker that is online. We don't have another person requesting to speak online currently.
Okay. So Mr. Darby's not online, okay, to come back to. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to item 8.0, Special Presentation. 8.1, Resolution Number 3267, Arts Initiative. And this is by Board Member Villa. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to bring this resolution to my fellow board members. So I'm just going to read this and if you have any questions, I'll definitely go over that. But this resolution for the Board of Education of Sacramento Unified School District is in support of the Arts and Education California Ballot Measure Resolution 3267, excuse me. Whereas access to arts and music education at school is a critical component of P-12 education. Whereas studies demonstrate the importance of art and music education in the development of children and their success in school and in life. Arts and music education improves cognitive development, reasoning, and language acquisition. It correlates with higher student achievement in reading and math and it leads to increased school attendance. Whereas participating in the arts is especially vital right now to our students' mental well-being amidst the ongoing impact of COVID-19. And whereas schools serving low-income communities would receive even more funding helping Black and Latino children who are more likely to lack access to arts education. School funding for the arts will increase by more than $800 million each year and arts programs in schools will grow by more than 50%. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District supports the proposed California Ballot Measure, the Arts and Music in Schools Funding Guarantee and Accountability Act. This increases funding in the arts and music education in every K-12 school in the state of California.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on the?
We do have one public comment from Ingrid Hutchins.
Okay. Ms. Hutchins, please go ahead. I think you're on mute.
There. Is that better?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
I think by now I could push the right button. All right. So I was just wanting to ask if this is going to definitely put music and art teachers in our schools. We had them a long time ago and they were taken away from our schools and we've had a significant decline in our children's social and emotional well-being since then. And we, every year, if we have any art in our school, it's because teachers are providing the materials themselves. You know, we spend hundreds of dollars every year making sure that we have supplies so kids can have art lessons, but even with that, we are not provided the time in the day. The pacing is always driven by standardized tests, which is what killed arts and music in school. So I appreciate that you guys are supporting this with a resolution, but what I'd like to see is some action behind it because if you really are worried about the social, emotional, and growth of our children and supporting them, you need to back that by reducing some of the teach-to-the-test mandates and start adding in our staffing and supplies so that we can provide students what they really need to grow as whole children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other comments? Okay, now we're bringing it back to the board for board discussion. Any board discussion? Mr. Rhodes, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just wanted to say that full support of this arts and culture is something that I remember being at my classy high school and having a teacher who used to open up his classroom during lunchtime so that young people can come in and do music and record songs and that was one of the reasons I went to school. Besides football practice, it was his class and doing there during lunch. And through music, I was able to find my voice and confidence to be able to do things on my school site. So arts, culture, music is very important and I'm in full support of this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a motion? Okay. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. Superintendent?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Thank you so much. We're moving on to item 8.2. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Student preferential vote? Thank you. I should have asked you first. Okay, now we're going to move on to item 8.2, Update on Mandatory COVID-19 Vaccination for Eligible Non-Exem Students and Staff by Bob Lyons and Victoria Flores. Go ahead.
Good evening. First Board President Garcia, Superintendent, members of the board, I'm Victoria Flores. Serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services and tonight with me is Chief Information Officer Bob Lyons. Next slide, please. So we start off our COVID-19 updates usually with what's gone on in the world of this pandemic. And so we know that this past week, we had the second booster dose was approved for those that received Moderna or Pfizer. This applies to everybody over 50, if you're four months past your first booster, as well as all immunocompromised people who are 12 or over. So this really does apply to a lot of our students who have health conditions that put them at higher risk, as well as if you received the Johnson &amp; Johnson and were a booster recipient. So we encourage folks, you know, to talk with their medical providers about that second booster dose. We're providing these doses at all of our vaccine clinics as well. We know, we've also been hearing a lot more about the BA.2 Omicron variant. This is now the predominant variant circulating globally and nationally here. You know, we said we would keep a close eye on these metrics and one of them was that wastewater surveillance and we're seeing a very slight uptick in our region, which includes the surrounding counties from us. Not a huge one, but just a little bit of a bump, a little bit of this wave kind of continuing. And our public health experts right now are cautiously optimistic. It is really unclear if this variant here in, you know, California locally will cause another surge like we've experienced in the past or more of a ripple, more of a continuation of the Omicron wave. That's kind of the current thinking is that we're likely to get more of this, you know, wave because our vaccination is up, we've got more treatments, we do have immunity from, you know, the numbers of people who did contract COVID previously. So the one thing we do know, we don't know what the future holds, but we do know that we will continue to use these tried and true mitigation measures, continuing to test in our surveillance testing, asking folks to stay home sick and get tested before they come back, isolate or quarantine as appropriate, masking is really effective, as well as all of that great ventilation and vaccination. We also just wanted to share that the Test to Treat Program is really expanding and we have resources here in our community as well. We've put this link on our COVID testing webpage. So anyone who is impacted by COVID, if they test positive and they're 12 or over and they're at increased risk for developing severe COVID, they can qualify for this program. We have a number of local pharmacies participating. You can actually put your address in and find the closest facility to you and they will take an at-home COVID test as well. We know that we serve, you know, communities where we've got disproportionate, you know, impacts on health inequities and, you know, a high number of our children have things like asthma and so we really want to just make sure that our families know about this resource as well. Next slide, please. So we've also been grounding ourselves in this new CDC metrics, the community levels, and I'm so happy to share tonight, we did a quick slide tweak. So if you're seeing something a little bit different on your screen, this data just came out around 5 o'clock tonight. We got the update that Sacramento County continues to be in that low or green metric as of today, April 7th. And if you look at the data, we're really trending great. We've continued to watch this data really come down. Our new COVID hospital admissions are at four per 100,000 residents. Our inpatient bed utilization is at 2.9%. That's incredibly low. And our COVID cases per 100,000 is at 36.92, well under that 200 metric. So we're really excited to see this data. We see this reflected in our county dashboard as well where they're listing a case rate currently of 2.7 and a positivity rate around 7%. Next slide, please. So we did say that when Sacramento County fell in that low or green tier per the CDC and remained there for four consecutive weeks, we would align with the CDPH guidance to strongly recommend masking until that category is met. So today, you're all still face masking, thank you. We knew that's going to remain in effect. And we also said that we would return to, if we return to that high community COVID transmission, that orange level, we would go back to requiring masking indoors and that we would consider if we saw that we were moving into that medium level depending on global, you know, national or local trends, as well as state, you know, or local public health orders. Next slide, please. So here's our visual and we've met our metric. We've met this benchmark that we set out. You can see that we first became green on March 10th and every successive week, including this week today, we met that green metric. So we are looking at on April 18th, when we welcome our students back from spring break, because tomorrow is our last day of school before spring break, that we will shift our mask policy to strongly recommending masks and we will make sure that masks remain readily available for everyone should they want one. I just want to share some heartening news here that, you know, mask mandate has been lifted for about four weeks. We've all likely been out in the public and, you know, been in spaces where some folks were masked and some weren't and there has been no appreciable increase in COVID cases throughout our state or even here locally in our county. Many of the other districts, you know, moved ahead with making that shift ahead of us. They have not seen increases in their cases as well and so this is really heartening news as we look to make this shift here in our district as well. Next slide, please. And we also want to support our families with how they can approach unmasking. And so I shared last time, the American Academy of PDA tricks had some guidance. This is some guidance from the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health and they really call out that we're in a very different place. We've got vaccines and tests and treatments, as I talked about earlier, and we have a lot more knowledge on how to keep ourselves and our community safe. And they talk about this sort of three-layered approach, protecting yourself. We know the most robust protection really is from vaccination, but low risk does not mean no risk. It means that we're most likely protected against severe illness and that's really great. We also look to protecting our family if we've got unvaccinated individuals or high-risk individuals in our family circle or even, you know, our close social circle. It might not just be our household, but people we spend a lot of time with, that you might want to consider continuing to mask and avoiding high-risk activities. And then, of course, we take these steps to protect our community, much like we've done here in Sac City. We continue to test, do surveillance tests, symptom screen, quarantine, mask, all of those things that keep our community safe. Next slide, please. So as we look to supporting our school communities with making this transition, masks or no masks, kindness is always welcome. This is a great campaign that our CDPH has launched and we really encourage our community to talk to your student about respecting other people's choices and really about what is the choice that's right for your family or your student. Of course, our your student. Of course, our staff are going to encourage and reinforce that mutual respect. Our amazing fabulous SEL team in partnership with our student support team has created a whole series of, of lessons and slide decks for educators to use. And these lessons are really about identifying feelings, right? Some of us might be really excited and also anxious and scared. And that's okay. That's normal. Managing change, perspective-taking, understanding my choice might be different from your choice. And of course, dealing with any kind of bullying. This is really designed to support this process, you know, this week when we return and ongoing, these are really life lessons that apply to lots of different, you know, situations we manage. I mean, so you can see this is a screenshot of one of the slides and we've used this CDPH slide. You can see this, this young student has a mask on and he's masking for himself. You can see he says, I have asthma. And so he's protecting himself, whereas the picture down below is a student who's masking who says, my little sister isn't vaccinated, so she's masking for her family. And this is just those perspectives and understandings we're hoping that, you know, our community will really lean into. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Information Officer Bob Lyons for the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Victoria. This slide displays the increase in student vaccination rates for the 12 and older age group over the past nine and a half weeks. The, the length of this, the charts that you see here. Student vaccination rates have increased about one-half of 1% since the last board meeting, representing approximately 85 additional student vaccinations. This rate is a little less than 2% lower than a Sacramento County Public Health Dashboard rate of 63.6% for the 12 to 19 age group. As the graph indicates, submissions have decreased in recent weeks, likely due to school closures. Our student 5 to 11 age group vaccination rate is still about 31%, about 8% lower than the 39% vaccination rate for the same Sacramento County age group. Overall, about 46% of our students are vaccinated and about 3% have filed for an exemption. Next slide, please. This slide displays the testing consent progress for all students over the past nine and a half weeks. At this point, about 56% of our student population, 5 and older, are required to test. Since the last board meeting, about 85 additional students have consented the test. Now, looking at the breakdown, so you could see, we have about 18, a little over 1,800 students that have not yet consented the test. The breakdown, we have five schools that account, well, 46 schools have less than 20 non-compliant students. And so 46 schools, less than 20, these schools should be celebrated. They've been working hard to, to get the testing consent out there. 18 schools have between 20 and 50 non-compliant students. Five schools account for approximately one-third of all our non-compliant students. So I'm going to pass it back to Victoria to finish the presentation. Next slide, please.
Thanks so much. So as we round up, we also wanted to talk about how we're going to have a safe return from spring break. We know so many people are excited for this break, but we want to make sure that we come back as safe as possible. So testing is really one of our key cornerstone strategies. And we have provided free at-home COVID test kits for all of our staff and students, much like we did over the, the winter break and those two, three-day weekends, again, for spring break. They should have gone home today. We'll be continuing to do that at-home distribution tomorrow as well. So hopefully, you know, everyone gets access to one of these, along with the flyer that tells you how to, how to use those tests. We've got emails, robocalls, text messages coming to you. If you're registered through Primary Health, you'll get a couple of these over break as well. We've done an instruction flyer and all of our threshold languages, as well as a video. And so we really encourage everyone to please test on that Sunday evening before you return. And, you know, if you are, you know, have tested positive, please stay home and care for yourselves. Let us know. We will reach out and provide that support. Our Serna Center Testing Center will also be open all of spring break, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Your whole household can get tested. Come on down. If you want to test because you're traveling, you're gathering, you know, you just want to make sure, we really encourage everyone to come and test. We also are going to look to be masking and really shifting to that strong recommendation that we continue to mask, particularly if we gathered in large groups, we traveled, we, we learned we were exposed to COVID, or again, to protect your, yourself or your family, if, if you have, you know, health risks, or if you or your family are not vaccinated. Vaccination, this is also a really great time during breaks to ensure that you or your child are up to date on all your vaccinations, all school-required. If your child's getting ready to go to seventh grade, they're going to need their T-DAPs. This is a great time to go ahead and get that. You can also, you know, get the COVID vaccine if and when your, your child becomes eligible, if you're eligible for a booster. And we really encourage our, our community members to consult with their healthcare provider, their doctor, if they have questions or concerns about COVID vaccine or any other vaccination. Lastly, please stay home sick. We really want to see you. We want you to be back in school, but if you're sick, please stay home, care for yourself, you know, make sure that you're 24 hours fever-free, your symptoms have improved, and you've either tested negative for COVID or you have that doctor's note showing otherwise. And this will really help support our community to come back safely from spring break. Next slide, please. So as we wrap up, we're going to continue to monitor our case rates. We've been doing this all the way along, including school surveillance testing. We jumped right back into surveillance testing when we reopened Monday and have continued all week. We will update our community either this evening or tomorrow morning about our shift in masking policy. Like Chief Lyons talked about, we are actively, you know, targeting our outreach to those 1,824 students. Yes, that progress is a little slower, but we are, we are not letting up on that. We're continuing to reach out. We will update our families on their students' vaccination or testing status. This was something we were looking to doing prior. We're going to get right back to that and get those notices and messages out. And of course, as we welcome new staff to our district, we will make sure that they are either vaccinated or have that exemption on file and participating in testing as well. And with that, we conclude our presentation.
Thank you, Victoria and Bob. We'll go ahead. This is an informational item, but we'll go ahead and bring it back to the, well, do we have any public comment, Ann?
We do. We have four speakers online.
Okay, four speakers.
Yes, the first is Jean Shanley, and she also has time from Sarah Waldrop for a total of four minutes.
Four minutes. Okay, let's go.
Hi, this is Jean. I also have time from Amy Harrington, Jill Kupelian, Sarah Waldrop, who you mentioned, Sandra Holstead, and Marisa Morishita. So I think that's like 12 minutes. I'm not sure I'll need all that, but they donate a good time to me. So the main thing I wanted to update you guys on, I know you've been focused on the strike and other issues. So I don't know if any of y'all had a chance to listen to the, the FDA Committee Subcommittee Meeting. It's the VRBPAC Committee that recommends to the FDA what they should do about like boosters and whatnot. So they had a meeting, it was like full day, eight to five, you know, with some breaks in there, but there had to be at least five or six hours of meetings, testimony, discussions. And the main thing they were trying to address and wrap their heads around was this, this no issue of like how to move forward in the future with like boosters and variants. And so there were some kind of interesting things that were mentioned. I do encourage you to go listen to the meeting yourself. And I'll send you a link after the meeting so that you, you have access to it and you can go look at it rather than take my word for it. But just some highlights that I wanted you guys to know about. Kicking off at the front end of the meeting, where I, where I jumped in, was a testimony from Dr. Christopher Murray. This guy works for the Institute of Health and Metrics Evaluation. This is a Bill Gates-funded institution. They're up in Seattle, I think like right next to the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation building right near University of Washington. And this guy was really interesting. He said a bunch of stuff, but one of the most impactful to me was, this is a direct quote from him. He was referring to the Omicron variant and he said, quote, "The marginal effect of masking at the community level was relatively small." I repeat, referring to Omicron, he said, "The marginal effect of masking at the community level was relatively small." This is based on data that they're collecting up there. That's what he pretty much concluded about masking. So I thought I'd pass that along to you. He also made reference to natural immunity, somewhere between like 60 to 70% of the United States, they're estimating is immune to Omicron right now. They said about 80%, he presented data that 80% is immune to Delta. There was a lot of other testimony and discussion about the new variants as well. Basically, all the, the different doctors and contributors pretty much agreed that like this boosting every four months idea is, is not workable. It's not their plan to move forward with that. And they're not sure really what they're going to do because they're kind of between a rock and a hard place because the vaccines aren't lasting longer than that, although they all agree four, four-month boosters is silly. They even use that word, silly and impractical. But they're not sure what to do. They don't even know how to identify correlates to put together a vaccine for next year that's responsive. I mean, when the new variants come out, that this, this is not practical for them to get a new vaccine together in time and pro-, and manufacture it and get it out to the public. By the time they do that, the vaccine is off and running, or the, the variant is off and running and kind of run through the population already. So it was really interesting. They kind of passed the mic back off to each other, back and forth. And all they really kind of agreed to was that they don't have any idea how to identify these variants. They don't think they're going to be able to do it for the fall. And they don't have an expectation that there'll be any effective vaccine for the fall. They could just try and push out the vaccine they've got now, even though it's already not responsive to Omicron. So it was kind of a head scratcher as to why they even were, were tasked with holding this meeting because usually the CDC is who decides how to handle new variants and identify new variants. So experts are kind of trying to scratch their heads, understand why this group was even looking at that. I guess the FDA was punting it to them because the FDA is not sure what to do about it. So I know this group has been concerned about, you know, trying to get everybody vaccinated. They did confirm in the meeting that these, these boosters aren't lasting much more than three to four months. And someone, somebody in the meeting, I don't remember who it was, Mr. Monto or Peter Marks, one of them stated very specifically, anybody who's got a booster that's more than three to four months old, they're essentially not vaccinated anymore. This came straight from the FDA meeting. You can go listen to it yourselves. It's really fascinating meeting. They mentioned that the flu vaccine, even on a good year, is only 60% effective and they're kind of likening this to like flu. They're, you know, kind of trying to figure out how to approach it like flu, even though they don't even have correlates for it the way they do with flu and they're not sure how they're going to get those. Yeah, so that was the weird meeting that they have. Oh, oh, Dr. Peter Marks also said that most Americans have declined to get the booster. I said they got data that looks like only about third of the population is sold on the booster anyway. So they're having trouble even pushing that. So yeah, it was an interesting meeting, you guys. I'll send you a link to it after tonight so you can go listen to it yourself and maybe take some of that under advisement and figure out, you know, how to move forward. Just a couple of comments. I noticed that in Victoria's presentation, she was showing some promotional material from CDPH about the kids and the masking. I find that to be confusing because my observation at our school is the kids are not taking their masks off because they're afraid that they're going to be criticized if they take them off. So I'm, I think it's bizarre. They got this marketing materials to try and encourage people, it's okay to keep the masks on. It's not what I'm observing in our school. Kids are afraid to take them off. I also know people with asthma and the asthmatics don't want the masks on because they breathe easier. So you got these marketing materials from CBPH suggesting that everybody with asthma needs to keep them on. I don't know, maybe there's some people that believe that, but there's, I know people with asthma, they don't want them on because it restricts their breathing and they already have breathing challenges. Then there's that little girl who said, oh, I can't, I can't take my mask off because my little sister's not vaxxed. I think this is, this pushes a lot of propaganda. I'm reaching out to Victoria to try and nail down what kind of data we've got in the county and in the district for how many children are actually at high risk, how many children died over the last two years, how many children were actually hospitalized. Because I do feel like we've kind of got this propaganda going out there that there's a high level of danger in a large amount of the population. So that, that ends up being kind of misleading communications to the community. One of the things they also mentioned in the meeting, which I never hear Victoria or Bob or anybody mention here in the county or in the district, is, is these treatments. I think there's still this, this line of, of, again, propaganda to people that, that COVID is not treatable because they call their doctor and the doctors don't give them any treatment. But in the FDA meeting, they clearly were talking about treatments and being an important part of the strategy moving forward, especially because they're not really sure how they're going to come up with a vaccine that works. And they mentioned Paxivid because that's, you know, that Pfizer meckton. People call it Pfizer meckton. It's like an ivermectin takeoff drug, protease inhibitor from Pfizer. But the cheaper ones are clearly ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine. And, and, and Victoria mentioned like, you know, the vulnerable people that were so worried about them. A lot of these people can help themselves by taking these medications prophylactically too. So they were talking about these medications at the FDA level there as an important focus going forward. So it would be great to see some education coming out from the board and county, Dr. Castier or whoever, trying to assure people that there are treatments, especially because the doctors are not telling people that it's treatable. They're just sending them home with no treatment, as dangerous as that seems. So yeah, so those are just a few updates. And I'll send you a link after the meeting so you can go, you know, check in about that FDA meeting yourself and, and bring yourselves up to speed on where things are going for the future in terms of the whole booster fiasco. Thank you so much. I yield the floor.
Thank you so much for your comments. Ann, do we have any other comments?
Yes, our next speaker is Ian Perkins.
Okay, Mr. Perkins, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. I would like to start off by saying we should have removed mask mandates much sooner. I respectfully recommend that you follow the science. I believe the four weeks of low community level metrics you agreed upon is arbitrary and double what was recommended by the science you cited as your framework. I would also like to ask, why would we mask until the 18th, the end of spring break, and then come back unmasked after everyone has congregated during spring break? I believe Victoria Flores likened masking to a warm coat. So I propose, why would we take our warm coats off right before the winter storm? It just doesn't make sense. I am not advocating for masking. I am advocating for our board to make common sense and forms decisions. The science lets us know that masks aren't effective or not effective, and natural immunity is extremely effective. I would like to end my comment by thanking the previous speaker for what she had to say, and also to please immediately remove the unnecessary masking and vaccine regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Marisha Morishita.
Ms. Morishita, go ahead.
Hello, I gave my time to Jean Shanley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Yes, our next and final speaker is Taylor Kayata.
Mr. Kayata, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you again. I've said it before, but thank you for your leadership here. Now that we're moving to having masks optional, I think I'd just like to take the time to remind you all that it's very important that we deal with our independence study issue, which, you know, despite signing a union contract, that didn't immediately go away. We still need to be able to take care of families who don't feel comfortable sending their kids to school if masks are going to be off. I think it's also notable that we pay special attention to the impacts on students with disabilities. It's been hard for a lot of students to get services. I've seen some information in the contract language that concerns me, that maybe we'll be not offering some services. So I just really want to make sure that if a student has an IEP, that we do our best to give them their services, even if they feel the need to stay home. And on another note, tying back to the comment I made in public comment, one of the best things about our district is we have such an engaged community. And one of the, you know, risks is when the community doesn't feel listened to, we can have problems. Now that we're taking masks off at school optionally, I'm wondering why we are not opening up the Serna Center during these meetings so you can hear directly from your community and look at us in our eyes when we talk to you. I think if our kids can have their masks off, it's time, you know, to do what we can to bring the community back and the community can feel listened to as well. Again, thank you very much and thanks again so much. Again, um thank you very much, and thanks again so much to Mr. Lyons and Ms. Flores and your teams for the great information you're sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Kayata. Final speaker?
Yes, that was the final speaker.
Okay, so now we're going to bring it back to um the board for discussion. Any questions, comments? Ms. Phillips?
Just a quick question from Ms. Flores. Can you please explain test to treat?
Sure, yeah. So so just like Ms. Shanley was speaking of, there are so many more treatments now available. And so there is a a federal program that if you test positive and you can go to one of your local pharmacies or your health provider and show your positive test, this is where time is critical. You can get a prescription for um one of those treatments. Paxlovid, I think, was the one, you know, that she had mentioned. Um and this really has proven very effective at reducing the severity of illness um that especially if you are immunocompromised. And so this treatment is available for anyone who's twelve and over who fits that category. Um you know, we always encourage you, talk with your health provider, maybe even be preventative. You know, send one of those text messages or emails um if you can about what are those options for you. We've included the link for that test to treat website right on our COVID testing website, right at the top. Um and you can actually put in your address and find the pharmacy closest to you. So I live right next to, I think, a Walgreens um that provides that. So I do encourage our community to look into that, know about that resource. This is one of those amazing innovations um that will really help us move through this.
Thank you. I had another question um for Mr. Lyons. I'm just curious, um the five schools that we say are one-third of the untested or untracked, I'm not quite sure exactly how that was said, but um is there any way to share that information? Maybe not so much with the community, but um you know, to to look at why those five schools are our highest are 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 making up so much of that one, that one-third of that that number of students. Does that make sense?
Uh yes, it does. Um I don't have that uh those numbers, uh those sites right in front of me right now, but I get those through you.
Okay, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Any other um comments, questions? I think that's it from the board. Thank you so much for um the update. It's um great that we're moving in the direction where we're not only going to smile with our eyes, but we're going to smile with our our, you know, uh lips um and our mouths. But um for those who choose to continue to mask, that is perfectly fine as well. So thank you so much, um uh Victoria and Bob. Now, moving on to um item nine point O. Board workshops, strategic plan and other initiatives, resolution um number thirty-two sixty. This is a resolution of the board um with the general obligation bonds, uh measure H. Um general obligation bonds, and this is um going to be presented by uh Mrs. Ramos.
Thank you, um Board President, uh Garcia, tonight. Um you, um board members and public, you received this information at the last board meeting for first reading and a full presentation, so we're just bringing up this information back to you this time, or this item back to you for approval. And we have uh Mr. Dell Scott, our financial advisor on this item here. If you have any questions, so we do not have a PowerPoint for you. It's, it would have been just the same information. Um the information did not change from the last board meeting. We are still uh pursuing the SUIZA at two hundred and twenty-five million dollars, so it's just before you for approval.
Okay, so if it is just for us for approval, then um do we have any public comment? No public comment? And then we have a motion and a second. And um we'll go, any debate or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go with um student preferential vote? Uh Superintendent, roll call?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Enthusiastic, aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
Thank you so much. Now we're moving on to um item nine point two, resolution thirty-two sixty-one. Um this is the same topic. A general obligation bonds for measure H. Oh, no, this is refunding the bond, the sixty-five million dollars back to, I think, taxpayers?
That's correct. That's correct, Member Garcia. Uh this is we're refunding a bond uh from two twenty-twelve uh where it's up for for bond and the analysis was performed and in refunding, we approximately, we'll say taxpayers about eight million dollars. And so again, the same information was shared with you at the previous board meeting with the full PowerPoint presentation, and now we'll bring it back to you for action. And if there are any questions, again, uh we have Mr. Scott in the audience that can answer them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ramos. Do we have any public comment?
No, no public comment.
Okay, no public comment. Um coming back for any board discussion comments? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, um do we have any debate or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh student preferential vote? Thank you. Um Superintendent, roll call?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
Okay, thank you so much. Now we're moving on to item um to public hearing, ten point O, item ten point one, resolution thirty-two sixty-five. Authorization for government co- contract um relating to energy service contract. Mr. Ramos and uh Mr. Ralston?
Thank you, Member Garcia. I'm gonna turn over this presentation to our Director of Facilities, Mr. Chris Ralston.
Good evening, uh Vice President Garcia, members of the board and the superintendent. Uh tonight's facilities department is proposing an energy reduction project that will be measure Q funded and replaces exterior lighting at twenty-five properties across the district. This evening, I will take you through aspects of our project for your review as part of approving this project under Government Code forty-two seventeen. I will discuss the scope of the project using Government Code forty-two seventeen as a procurement method, an analysis that shows the cost savings opportunities by using this procurement method, a financial analysis of the proposed project, and discuss the estimated energy cost savings by implementing this project. This slide, the scope of the project includes replacing exterior lighting at twenty-five properties and includes the interior lighting at Leonardo da Vinci K eight in Leitata Floyd Elementary. The reason for those two is they were called out in the measure Q final series cell uh last July. The work will begin in midsummer and is anticipated to end in September of this year. The work is negotiated with a licensed electrical contract under the provisions of Government Code forty-two seventeen and will follow the project labor agreement. Finally, the district has incorporated a smud energy retrofit rebate as part of the project. Next slide, please. Government Code forty-two seventeen is a procurement method that allows school districts' boards of education to let contracts as an energy service contract if certain criteria are met. This presentation will take you through those criteria. Additionally, we have posted a public notice as required that there will be a public hearing on this matter tonight. Next slide, please. Using forty-two seventeen versus the traditional design bid and build method, as you can see in the table on the screen, the added cost of scope development and design, construction management, and any contingency adds approximately twenty-five percent in soft costs to a project. Using this method, the contractor is required to provide an audit of the work, which was done at no cost to the district. Management of this project is being handled by the district's facility staff, and because of this, we anticipate a savings of approximately six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Next slide. A financial out analysis on the screen is for review. This provides an initial first-year savings in energy and in maintenance. Then an escalation for infla- inflation is added for the next fifteen years. This project is going to have a payback of approximately seven and a half years. And as you can see, over fifteen years, which is the average life of LED lighting, this will save the district almost five point eight million dollars. Next slide, please. This slide, sorry, it's a little tight to read, but it does provide the breakout of each campus anticipated savings of energy over the life of the payback period. You also notice at the bottom that we are receiving ninety-two thousand nine hundred twenty dollars pro- approximately from smud and an energy rebate. Next slide. Our steps for the rest of the item is we ask that you, uh ask the board that they hold a public hearing on this item, and after the public hearing, I will be available for any questions. Finally, we ask you hold a vote on resolution thirty-six twenty-five, which, if approved, will authorize the energy service contract using Government Code forty-two seventeen point one-two.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston. Um go ahead and go to a public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No, there is no public comment on this item.
Okay, um we're bringing it back to the board for any questions, comments? Board Member Phillips?
Just curious, um we have uh a project cost of a hundred and twenty-two thousand or so for Sacramento High School. Can someone explain that to me? Anyone?
Great, thank you for the question. The the project itself is going through all the facilities. This is more of a deferred maintenance method, so all of our facilities will receive some type, this is hopefully phase one of many. They would just go through all ninety-some properties that we own.
Member Phillips, can I ask if if your question is, um given that Sac High is a charter school? Why, okay, yeah, if 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 Rose, if you can just answer that question in terms of our responsibilities from a facilities perspective?
Yes, we still have to maintain all of our properties that um we own them, and we all, we still own the property where Sac High is located, as well as other charters, independent charter schools. And um and it's in our best interest, of course, to maintain the properties and and provide any funding that is available for those because um, you know, it'll just improve the property and extend the the life on it. We don't want it to deteriorate, of course. Um Chris, is there anything else, uh any other requirement that you can think of as far as uh requiring us to to uphold the deferred maintenance on these?
A deferred maintenance is a chargeable uh item to our leases, so that we we they we charge them a per square foot cost for maintenance. So as the maintenance of these uh lives, life units come due, we are obligated to replace them. They have to be kept at the same maintenance standard as all of our schools.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Um I have a quick question. Um the savings, um what happens to the savings?
Well, the savings is to the general fund operating line, so it, for me, all I'm doing is I'm saving it. Where it goes, I I'm not, it's not my lane.
Okay, so that's our lane? Okay, just
It just reduces our costs, right? Our, that's what we're trying to do, district-wide, just reduce our costs.
Okay, but there's still savings because um we're being more efficient, so.
We're using capital dollars to lower operating expenses, yes.
Okay, good. Um okay, so um with that, um I'll entertain a motion. I have um second. Any um debate or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, um student preferential vote? Superintendent, roll call?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to item ten point two. This is the um AB twelve hundred disclosure and approval for the Teamsters um Union Local one fifty and Teamsters Classified Supervisors, um the MOUs for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Next slide, please. Uh this MOU is only executed on March twenty-first, and um we're now bringing it to the board for approval, so that we can pay it out. Um this MOU covers um employees that were vaccinated and employees that, um next slide, please. Thank you, who are fully vaccinated by these dates. There's a certain amount that they will get, and the next bullet explains employees vaccinated between this period of time will get a percentage of um of that, a lower uh amount of that stipend. And then there's finally a third one, next slide, please. Um employees who are fully vaccinated and worked in this classification will also receive a one-time stipend of seven hundred and fifty dollars by August thirty-first, and these are all funded out of our STR three funds, so these are not going to be funded out of um unrestricted general fund dollars. Next slide, please. The total amount is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars for this um MOU, and we're bringing it to you for um approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment on this item.
Okay. Um any board discussion, comments? You're you're moving it? Okay, so um we'll go ahead and um I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Any debate or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, um student preferential vote? Roll call, Superintendent?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
All right, thank you so much. Um now, moving on to item eleven point O, communications, employee organization reports. Eleven point one, SETA?
We have uh no speakers online for employee organization reports.
Okay, so no SETA, no SEIU, no TCS, no Teamsters, and no UPE?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to eleven point two, district advisory committees?
We have, oh, excuse me, we have um Taylor Kayata has his hand raised.
For district advisory committees?
I believe so.
The CAC, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm actually giving a public comment on the CAC because I'm speaking on my own behalf. Um but just a quick note that we have our next meeting on uh April nineteenth, Tuesday, the nineteenth, and we will be having nominations for our um our new officers for next year, so I'd encourage anyone listening to come out if you're interested in joining up with us. Um and also, I just wanted to invite the board um and other staff to come. We're gonna have a brief uh presentation and discussion about a CEPLA alternate dispute resolution conference that several staff went to, um and I was also able to attend. Some really good information there that I think can help our specialized students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um moving on to the district um English learner advisory committee or the LCAP, the parent advisory committee, student advisory council? African American Advisory Board?
No, no speakers online.
Okay, thank you so much. Um now, moving on to eleven point three, superintendents report?
Thank you, um Vice President Garcia. Uh let me begin by expressing our deepest condolences to the families that were devastated by the senseless shooting in our city last Sunday. A tragedy like this affects our entire community, as we know, and the events that unfolded in the midst of ongoing negotiations serves as a reminder that we have a role in working to prevent tragedies such as these. We all know that schools serve as safe havens and centers of emotional and mental health support for many, many of our students. And the tragedy, the tragedy underscores the importance of the return and and did underscore the importance of the return of our students and staff on Monday. We started this week with uh some hope and steps toward healing by welcoming back our students to schools. Past few weeks, I know, have been challenging times for our staff, but also for our students who missed over two thousand valuable instructional minutes, essential support from staff, and socialization with peers. I also know, and I can speak for my own daughter, that many of our students missed extracurricular activities such as baseball, softball, soccer games, track and field meets, and other essential and important activities to our students. Please know that we are making every effort possible to reschedule as many of those events as possible. We also know that the strike deeply impacted our families with additional burdens for our parents, our guardians, who are already overwhelmed by day-to-day responsibilities. To those families, we're sorry about all the challenges that you had to endure during this strike. In achieving agreements with SETA and SEIU that ended the strike, we did all that we could, and we said it over and over, all that we could to demonstrate how highly we value our employees who provide the love, the care, the support that our students deserve every single day. We think these agreements balance the needs of students and employees through the use of one-time funds and ongoing spending that we hope to manage successfully in the coming years. years. The agreement with SETA in particular also includes a framework for achieving healthcare savings, how defined, how those savings will be defined, and how they will be applied to bring more equitable learning opportunities for our students. I'd like to believe that the shared commitment to use those savings to support our MTSF, our MTSS efforts is something that we should all celebrate. We will discuss more details about all of our agreements at our next special, at our next board meetings, regularly scheduled board meeting on April 21st. That's the day that the Sacramento County Office of Education will present its legally required and independent review of each of our agreements. And I hope and encourage everyone in our SacCity community to attend or follow that meeting online to hear SCOE's assessment in their role providing fiscal oversight to SacCity Unified. The eight-day strike will also have an impact on our district calendar, and this is one of the most often asked questions that I have been receiving, and I know that our board members have received, and we're doing everything that we can to provide an answer. We know that we will now fall short of our state mandated instructional requirements for both days and minutes. Our students lost valuable instructional time, and we owe it to them to make these up. We also owe it to our taxpayers. We risk paying approximately $46 million in penalties. That is money we simply cannot afford to lose. Addressing this shortfall in instructional days and minutes must be done in coordination, of course, with our labor partners, and we are meeting with them as early as tomorrow. Our hope is to resolve questions related to the calendar as quickly as possible, as we know that many families are trying to make plans or already have plans for summer childcare, vacations, camps, and so many other activities. And finally, as you heard earlier this evening, board members, we received encouraging news today about our COVID-19 numbers. As a county, as the board directed, once the district achieved four weeks in the CDC's low community transmission, we would be able to lift our masking requirement for school, for our schools and our staff, and transition to a strongly recommended policy. And you heard from our team how we plan to support and protect those students and staff that continue to wear a mask. I'm pleased to say that we will make that move on Monday, April 18th, when students return from spring break. That said, and as a public commenter mentioned, the spread of COVID in our schools is still a concern. Therefore, this week, we communicated with all of our district families to look out for free COVID-19 take-home test kits, which are being distributed to students today and tomorrow. Our strategy of testing before students return from a holiday break helped prevent more than 500 students and staff who tested positive for COVID from returning to school following the winter break. Even during our recent school closures, student support and health services worked with our nutrition services department to distribute COVID-19 take-home test kits at our community meal distribution sites, and we really thank all of our staff for coordinating that approach. Our schools are an important part of creating safer neighborhoods, and I am so grateful that we can fully be of service to our community again. I ask that everyone follow the instructions so that we can return safely after spring break and celebrate with our students. Thank you. Yep, that is the goal.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and provide a president's report for item 11.4. I'll just keep my comments brief. I just want to thank everyone who worked hard to welcome back our students, teachers, and staff this Monday. The strike, the strike was very stressful on, for everyone. I'm glad that we were able to reach an agreement that brings kids back and adequately compensates our hard-working educators and staff. I also want to wish everyone a healthy and safe spring break, and I look forward to welcoming the public to join us in person for our next board meeting on April 21st. So with that, I'll go ahead and move on to item 11.5 for student, student board members' report? No report? Okay, 11.6, information sharing by board members? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to item 12.0, Consent Agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And do I have any debate or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, superintendent?
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you so much. So future board meetings, April 21st. Again, that's an in-person meeting, so we welcome our public to join us in person. And can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.